...test for active virus.
The tests that we're offering at this particular thing is an antibody test. And the reason the antibody test is important is because you're probably more familiar with what's called a swab test. The swab test is detecting genetic material from the virus, and it's only for people who have symptoms. The antibody test, on the other hand, is for people who do not have symptoms or who had symptoms in the past and want to know whether they actually had COVID. And so it allows us to do two things. Number one, we can tell you whether what you thought you had in the past was actually a COVID infection. Number two, it will tell you whether or not you've developed a level of immunity to the virus. And the reason that's important is because people who do have antibodies, I have less virus in their body than people who don't have antibodies, so they're less likely to infect somebody else. There's a third benefit. There are people who are deathly ill in the hospital, and there are some evidence that taking serum donations from patients who have recovered from the virus who have antibodies can be used to treat those people. So you could potentially be a donor for somebody that's severely ill. So that's an added benefit.
Is there a cost to this?
There's no cost. You know, we want to make this available to individuals at no charge. It's very, very important, very critical. Just as there'd been no charge for the COVID-19 testing, there'll be no charge for this antibiotic testing as well.
It's intended to encourage all of you to come and get tested. So what it does for our public health is that the swab test was predominantly testing people with symptoms. And it turns out that people with symptoms are a smaller segment of the people who actually got infected.
Right.
And so what this does is it gives us a better idea of what the true prevalence of the disease is in the community. In July and August, we had a lot of what we call the millennials out there doing parties and things during summer break, and very few of them actually got sick, but they spread the infection through all of their friends and themselves, and they brought it home and transmitted it to older people. So it's really important that you know what your status is, and the public health authorities can then get a better idea of what the prevalence of disease is in that community, and they can intervene.
Testing will be at our district office on 43rd and Central. Individuals are encouraged to sign up in advance, and they can, they may do so at the gardahart.org or they may call 866-299-8998.
A new drive-in movie experience is coming to the L.A. Zoo. Catch the Ford Theatre's new virtual season, and the third annual Real Abilities Film Fest goes online. All this up next on Virtual Things to Do.
The L.A. Zoo is proud to present their first-ever drive-in movie series. This drive-in event will feature cool themes, tasty movie theater fare, available through mobile ordering, trivia challenges, and more. The evening will include a special pre-show video presentation with the zoo's biggest animal stars. This wildly wonderful nighttime experience offers safe, physically-distanced fun for all ages and is produced in accordance with county and state health and safety guidelines. Films being screened will include Zootopia, The Lorax, Goosebumps, and more. L.A. Zoo Drive-In Movies dominate their screens for three consecutive weekends, beginning Friday, October 16th, and runs through November 1st. Tickets are expected to sell out quickly, so get your tickets now. Visit lazo.com/movies. The Ford Theatre is going virtual this season with a series of free events now through December 8th. The Ford's State of L.A. series features conversations with culture makers, entrepreneurs, and thought leaders in L.A.'s art scene. From world-class dance performances to in-depth discussions and spectacular live music, most of the events can be streamed on Facebook and YouTube. Enjoy all the spoils of the Ford's digital season online through December 8th. Visit theford.com and dive into a massive collection of eclectic art. Real Abilities Film Festival Los Angeles 2020 is a three-day online festival that showcases new and classic films, conversations, and artistic programs, and that explores, embraces, and celebrates the diversity of our shared human experience. All films are presented with full audio description and closed captioning. Don't miss Real Abilities' third annual film festival, streaming October 16th through the 18th. For ticket information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacdview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, October 13th. I am Nuri Martinez, President of the Council. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sadio.
Present.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Corretts.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price. Price. Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Here.
Wesson. Wesson. Twelve members present and accorum, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of September 30th, 2020.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rue moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and it's time for the flag salute.
Mr. Buscaino, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance this morning?
With great honor, Madam President. Please rise, right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members, let's go ahead. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order. Next.
Items one through eight are items that have been noticed for public hearing. There has been a request to refer item number one back to the Budget and Finance and Public Safety Committees, and there has also been a corrective committee report submitted and posted for item number 12. Items nine through 26 are items for which public hearings have been held, and items 27 through 46 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objections, those items are now before us. Members, do you wish to call any of these items special? Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call item 18. I have a substitute motion.
Okay, go ahead and...
It's being, the motion is being circulated. It has amended boundaries on the motion.
Yeah, can you please read the substituting to the record?
Okay.
Just the change that you want, Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay. Will be amended to, that the City Council pursuant to Municipal Code, Section 80.69.4, and the California Vehicle Code, Section 22507 hereby prohibits the parking of vehicles that are in excess of 22 feet in length or over seven feet in height during the hours of 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. along both sides of Foothill Boulevard from Balboa to Bledsoe.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Corretts. Any others, Ms. Rodriguez?
No, that'll do it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one, item 28, for a couple questions of the CIO.
Okay, item 28 for questions for Mr. Bonin. Okay, Mr. Bonin, we'll have someone here to answer your questions. We'll let them into the meeting. We're contacting them now.
Thank you.
Any others, members? Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and tell me what items we can vote on?
Madam President, we'd like to... We have received a request to hold item 10 on the desk. And we are now able to vote on items nine through 26. With 18 as a substitute.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and hold item number 10 on the desk.
If we could take a separate vote on item 18.
Thank you.
And a separate vote on item 18? So go ahead and let's go ahead and vote on...
Nine through 17 and 19 through 26. Excuse me. Item number nine, item number 11 through 17, and items number 19 through 26.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on those items. Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Corretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price? Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and move into public comments? Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and read the the calling information for our callers? And then we can follow that up by the city attorney.
Thank you. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Let me repeat. Call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
As for the speaking rules, to members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak on the items first and then general public comment. We'll tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or again, very off-topic, the President will cut you off and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we'll move on to the next speaker. We're going to take 40 minutes total of public comment. The items that are open for public comment are items two through eight, 18, and 27 to 46. Again, two to eight, 18, and 27 to 46. Finally, for members of the public who are calling in to speak, given the new Zoom credentials, what we're going to do is we're going to admit everyone into the meeting at once. You'll be muted. When you hear the last four digits or other identifying information of your phone number being read out, please press star six to unmute yourself to tell us which items you want to speak on. Because there's a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, please try to keep one ear sort of on the phone so that you hear as soon as possible that we're calling for you to speak. And then, again, press star six. Tell us which items you'd like to speak on. We'll tell you how long you have. And then, begin. Please turn down, when you do this, immediately turn down the volume on your other devices to avoid any feedback or time delays. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1108, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi, it's Daniel Gus. All items and general public comment, please.
Okay, you have three minutes and you're one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Altogether, three minutes. Okay. Council members, I'm just gonna run through the agenda items. Item number 27, this shows that REAP works. When you hold landlords accountable, they will work to get off of REAP, and this is a good thing. And in the spirit of John Walsh, when you do good things, a critic should also compliment you. REAP works, keep up the good work on that. Item number 28, cost savings. This is another good thing, but you need more savings. You need to go better and deeper on that. There's a long road ahead, far after the pandemic. Just for example, you know, a lot of the savings that you're getting on item number 28, our city attorney, as I'll explain later on, just cost you guys $2.5 million in sanctions for malfeasance by Mike Fuhr. So a lot of the savings you're getting here on item 28 have been squandered by city attorney Mike Fuhr, who wants to be our neighbor, our mayor, and I will tell you more about that later. Number 33, good that there's home care, but this is more of a focus on salaries rather than help. You need to focus that we're delivering what we're promising. Item number 34 is interesting, between $1.5 million and $2 million. Why is there no council member's name on this for advertising consulting? How about right now? Digging into this $2 million in number 34 and save us that money. We're gonna need it. We don't need $2 million of advertising consulting. Number 35 is good for marine work, but secret exemptions always concern me. On item number 36, Mr. Rue, Mr. Martinez, there are tons of oversized vehicles parked on Sepulveda between Burbank and Victory. Please apply these same rules to them. And item number 41, revitalize Melrose. If you want to revitalize Melrose, how about opening Melrose and opening all of the surrounding areas as well? I'll go on to my general public comment. Council members, my new column in City Watch is titled, "Mayor? How Does No Sound, Mike Fuhr?" This is about the malfeasance by city attorney Mike Fuhr's office, which just cost us $2.5 million in sanctions in the Price Waterhouse LADWP case. You want to find out why this guy wants to be mayor? He just squandered $2.5 million, not because of a mistake, but because of malfeasance. And again, it's called "Mayor, How Does No Sound, Mike Fuhr?" It's on City Watch LA. Council members, I just filed a claim against Gil Sadio for his defamatory slanderous comments at me at your last meeting. He can't do that, and the city should have prevented him from doing that. And by the way, that meeting was illegal. Your systems went down, you deliberated, unvoted, and I filed a claim against the city for that. When your technology goes down, you have to stop the meeting, stop the deliberation, and stop the votes. Have a good meeting, see you in committee.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I would like to speak on all available items and general public comment, please.
You have three minutes for all items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yes, good morning to the public. All blessings and honor to my fellow Angelino. Martinez, apologize to Ms. Autry. That's my first comment. Apologize, Ms. Martinez. I'll go straight to number... Item number 39. Here we go again. Price, seconded by Farrell, of course, anorexic Farrell. More corruption from the Los Angeles sleazy council of homelessness and despair. They want to build La Prenza Libra Apartments. This is nothing new. They've squandered the $1.2 billion of homeless bond funds on themselves and their developers and their campaign contribution. $35 million for this apartment building for 63 units. My math says that cost $555,555.55 per unit. That's why the HHH funds, they can only build about 2,000, about 2,200 units. The average cost of a unit is $500-something thousand. The city controller confirmed that. $500,000 into $1.2 billion is about 2,200. This is the corrupt, inept system of Herb Wesson, king of homelessness, has brought onto our city. You've made the city a homeless encampment with this kind of garbage for campaign contributions to developers. Corrupt while people go homeless and hungry. The good people of the city of LA gave you these funds through their good heart, and you're building these things. This is nothing new. Vampire Krikorian built one for $700,000 a unit, 400 square feet per unit. How does that get us out of homelessness? You people are insane. All of these items, number 12 and 13, you just voted on. All these items you've just voted on are all yes votes. Why do you even show up? They will all be yes votes. CD 10 and items 12 and 13, $13 million, $17 million
So, so Mr. Moses?
Doubt-faced Herb Wesson's
So, sorry to interrupt, but you're free to talk about that in...
What item number 44, please? Kevin DeLeone again. You're gonna vote him in. On the 28th, you gave him property, you gave him funds for his... Look what you're doing, for AK staff, facilities, events, and activities.
Sir, you can move on to your general public comment now.
Yeah, okay, thank you. You're gonna give Mark... It doesn't matter what they vote on, public, they will all be yes votes. The LA City Council does what's called vote trading to the nth degree. Why do they even show up? They vote trade. Doesn't matter how debilitating or negative the project is, they will all get yes votes. Listen to them. They're all yes votes. They're gonna give Dawson, sleazy Dawson, $540,000 for his offices on Crenshaw, another luxury office on Crenshaw Boulevard. I beg you to put it there. I beg you, we will picket you every damn day. Mike Fuhr is a murderer. He murdered Tim Morrow. He belongs in jail like Huizar.
Thank you, next caller.
Price.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4208, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, it's Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on items 28, 44, and general public comment.
So you have two items, two minutes for the items and a minute for general public comment.
Thank you. You know, I... For item 28 on the furloughs, apparently Richard Wellen sent an email to y'all saying, "On the hopeful front, Speaker Pelosi says to stand by for further bailout." I am standing by. It's not coming. Even if it does come in January, do you think the Republicans are actually gonna give Joe Biden a meaty stimulus? You've got a 2 to 400 million dollar gap. Biggest question is, after all of these months, why haven't you opened up those LAPPL contracts? Defund the police? There's no way out of this unless you actually address it out in the room. For item 44 and Kevin DeLeone, I... You know, since March 3rd, I got, you know, clear win. It should be straightforward for Jose Huizar to resign and allow the appointment of Kevin DeLeone. But in this particular instance, I think it is a little weird that we have a situation where Jose Huizar has been suspended, and there's a temporary vacancy, and you're utilizing the recourses of a complete vacancy. And there's an incongruence in our charter, there's a lack of clarity. And we haven't really seen anything on that, as far as what kind of actual power you have here and under what grounds you're basing it. Is this because he's been inactive and hasn't shown up to a meeting because you barred him? That's something that you created. Would you be doing this if Jose Huizar had another, you know, term that he was eligible for? Would you be doing this if Jose Huizar had the resources to sue you? Because I think you have a really good claim. I think it's just all in all kind of weird that you're removing somebody from office without any due process and without any transparency under what exact grounds you're acting. So all in all, it's just kind of weird. But anyways, my general public... Actually, I'll finish up on that, you know. Journalists asking these kinds of questions would call the council president's office, and who would they speak to? Rick Coca, the guy that was Jose Huizar's cover man, who aided and abetted all of the crimes that he was engaged in. For my general public comment, I'd like to address the disgusting and misleading attack ads from council member Rue. If you're looking to condemn divisive and violent groups, maybe start with the Police Protective League Union. And on a last note for council member Rue, I know what you did last summer, and more importantly, I know what you did the summer before that. So, good riddance. And with redistricting, we're nearly a week past the secret deadline, and there's still over 12 vacancies on our redistricting commissions. Council member Martinez hasn't made a single appointment and is responsible for half of those vacancies. This much is clear. What we're watching is the accumulation of power, the desire to have those tentacles hung around all of your necks, everybody else on council. So enjoy. Your silence is just gonna fuck you over down the road. As it always does.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you, next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 0899, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
This is Stacy Dawson Stern, and I would like to speak on item 31 and general public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute for each, go ahead.
Okay, so item 31, as far as guidelines for affordable housing go, this council has not demonstrated that they understand how ineffective affordable housing guidelines actually are. They seem to be nothing more than ways for elected officials to continue to funnel funds for affordable housing out of our budget into the hands of developers that they serve. How can Sadio even pretend to care about this? He meets more with developers and lobbyists than with constituents. He met with Maury Goldman 25 times between 2013 and 2018, and he went and ignored the voices of Lincoln Heights constituents last Thursday at the City Planning Commission as they appealed the mass of Avenue 34 development. Out of 468 units, only 66 are designated as very low-income housing, and guess what? The median household income in Lincoln Heights doesn't even meet the requirements to enter the lottery for those units. Not only that, but the affordable housing designation expires after 55 years. How is that affordable? So, okay, I want to move on to general public comment by saying, first of all, defund the police. You guys are ignoring your responsibility. The police commission constantly refers to city councils having more power than them. Step in and use it. I also, I also want to say that city council should just recognize that there are so many lawsuits filed against the city of Los Angeles right now, demanding that projects that pass through Huizar's Plum Committee be stopped immediately until thoroughly investigated. So I suggest that Sadio, since he was on the Plum Committee with Englander and Huizar during the height of their criminal activities, be removed from the housing and the Plum Committees until the investigation... Committees until the investigation is over. I yield my time, except one thing, I just wanna say, you all fucking suck. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Sadio.
Yes, just as a matter of fact, my name was invoked. The fact of the matter is, I was not on Plum for a significant period when Mr. Englander and Mr. Huizar were, the period that was noted by the previous speaker. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's go ahead and take the next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in seven-seven-one-nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Eric Previn, Studio City, speaking on all the items and general public comment.
You have three minutes. Mr. Previn, you have three minutes on all your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Sadio's comment. We'll look into who was sitting in that chair when he was not. Uh, very interesting. So, great work on getting some Measure W, County Measure W funding going, and comes a great interest to the North Hollywood Park community who have fifty-five-point-six acres right near the disadvantaged part of CD two, and we're getting, if I, I can't quite see this straight, but the capital cost for the project is a hundred-and-eighty-six million dollars? Wow, that's terrific outreach. I mean, I'm just finding out about it now. Good work. And half of that money will be covered by DWP. So, thanks to Doug Tripp, who slid over there from CD twelve, where he was working for Englander for years before Monica Rodriguez. Anyway, uh, good work, and it's nice that you've come to an agreement with the ten labor organizations, um, so hopefully that is gonna get us through. I will say that there was a note by the County Board of Supervisors for a cultural historic designation that should be aimed at Mitch O'Farrell, so he should watch for that. It, it looked good. It's a very nice, uh, it's nice to have such a powerful government entity led by Ridley Thomas, who's trying to get elected, uh, being influencing like that, uh, just before he leaves. Of course, it's a good opportunity to vote for, uh, Grace U.
Mr. Previn, I'm not sure what item you're on. Would you please tell us?
Sure, I'm gonna go back to, uh, the basic item one, public hearing where you've got, uh, increase.
Actually, we continued item number one. So, the items that are open.
I beg your pardon?
The items that are open for public comment are two through eight, and then eighteen and twenty-seven through forty-six.
Okay, but what about the basic life support increase? That's a public hearing item.
Ah, it's been continued. It was referred back to committee. When it comes back, we'll take public comment on it.
Okay, well, it's just a disgusting and appalling time to be doing that, so I appreciate your doing that. Now, CD eleven wins the lighting district award. Now, these are all hearing protests, so it's funny how we haven't really had a chance to hear from those folks. Anyway, that's fine. Listen, regarding the preferential parking district program, where, you know, certainly in CD ten, Herb Wesson is stuffing that one through, and there's several other ones. I know Carruthers, nobody loves a parking preferential district more than Carruthers. But these are not good for the public, because what they do is they result in pernicious tickets and fines for everyone. And David Rue certainly has, I would say, uh, come to Jesus as regarding the Beechwood Canyon enclave of parking restrictions now.
Yeah, Mr. Previn, I, I think you're talking maybe on item sixteen, which we already voted on. Maybe you could go to the items that are open for public comment, or we can take you straight to general public comment, whatever you want.
No, no, I would like to speak on, I would like to speak on the Preferential Parking District Twenty-six, which is certainly a fair game, is it not? In West Adams?
No, actually, we've, you can talk about it all you want during general public comment, which starts right now.
No, well, general public comment, okay, is it, are you suggesting that now is the general public comment time starting?
Yes.
Well, that's unfortunate. Why can't I talk about the LAFD's sworn overtime of six million that's going to FEMA?
So, if you wanna talk about that during general public comment, please go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Well, you know, this grows tiresome, because it's impossible to be a good citizen in the, in the narrow lanes that you provide, and, you know, that's just not the way it was intended. And, you know, as we phase out Christopher Columbus Day and look at changing things to indigenous, which I support, because of the brutality and, you know, kind of unpleasant aspect to some of that, I do think that, um, you know, the, the idea of a council, which is what you are the lawyer for, is intended to hear from the people. It was unthinkable in either a Quaker meeting or in a native council setting where that you would say, "Sorry, you have one minute." And, oh, you can't talk about that particular issue. So, you know, I don't know how you've managed to come up with these crazy schemes where I can't talk about, uh, for the second time, the egregious upcharges for ambulances, you know, and for advanced life care support. These people who need that need to be able to call.
Go ahead and take the next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in eight-one-nine-one, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Ann Fisher, and I'd like to speak on eighteen-thirty-six, twenty-seven-thirty-one, thirty-nine, forty-five, forty-one, forty-three, and public comment.
So, you have three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Um, in regards to eighteen-thirty-six, large vehicle parking, it's great that you're coming up with ideas on limitations for these people to park their homes, because that's what they have become, they have become their homes, and they don't have places to go. So, we need to understand that these people are living in these domicile vessels, and it's impractical on them, for them, to repair and afford the gas and figure out how to keep moving them and moving them and, um, applying their knowledge to figure out the new laws forward. In regard to twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-nine, and forty-five, the housing issues, we have containers, we can build yurts, we have empty buildings that are near LAX, we have ships, we have parks, we have lots. If you just close your eyes and open up your minds to a better form of unity, we have the ability, we have the engineers, the architects, um, the planners, the artists, we have the landscapers that can create living areas, we have food trucks, we have mobile showers that we could do so much better. The advertising that you want to put in place, the best advertising is not to be putting up billboards and flyers and banners, but to show through leadership. Leadership that we do care, that we are a city, that we're safe, that we're vibrant, that we're allowing people to be happy, smiling, working, and they will get back to spending. The best advertising you can do is be the leaders we want to see. In regard to the Melrose area revitalization, um, issues forty-one and forty-three, the entire city needs revitalized, and the beautification that you wanna spend money on, no amount of money will beautify the blight of the city unless the issues are addressed in regard to mental health, services, homelessness, and leadership. You talk about saving money, but yet we have so many lawsuits and corruption, as someone mentioned before. The city attorney was caught in malfeasance, um, costing so much money that could be used so much more wisely. Public comment. We have all played Monopoly, and in L.A., we seem to be playing Sorry. We aren't working together. We have the best city, we have the weather, we have the engineers, the architects, like I said, the artists, we have educators, we have you guys, all who are incredibly experienced and hardworking, and you know the issues. The issues have been at hand in L.A. for very many years, for decades. We just need to have these brains come together, form a plan, reimagine our city, and create a, a form of, of a new way of life forward, spending our money wisely, throwing out the corruption, using our technology, using these creative, brilliant minds to imagine a place where everybody has housing, medical care, mental health care, transportation, job training. We can do this if we would just come together as leaders, which you are, and really throw out the old playbooks and bring in the new ones. Thank you so much, and I do appreciate your work, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak, and I came here because this was a city of dreams, and it's become the city of nightmares, and with hard work and unity forward, and without bashing or profanity or vulgarity or anger, I think we could all come together and make this the city we all wanna live in.
Thank you very much, caller. Thank you. Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in six-zero-six-eight, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in six-zero-six-eight, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Sierjenko. I would like to speak on, um, items twenty-eight and forty-four, please, and general public comment.
You have two minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yes, on item twenty-eight about the furloughs, um, you know, you're facing a four-hundred-million-dollar windfall in the budget. Things need to be adjusted. Um, you know, I, I wonder what you think is going to happen, um, but you still haven't opened up those LAPPL contracts. Um, I know they spend a lot of money on some of, uh, council members, uh, the election campaigns, um, but it, the lar, the largest part of the budget is what should be cut. Um, we're, you know, things are gonna have to happen regardless. You're gonna have to make these changes. Um, and instead, you're gonna take it out on, you know, the people in the city who have been calling and saying to defund the police. Um, I don't know if you saw what happened last night, um, it's gonna be two nights ago, the LAPD was, uh, you know, shooting up a Lakers celebration parade. Um, and, you know, I see staffers walking around in council chambers, and, you know, I wonder if council members are paying attention, um, because this is important. You, you all give, uh, you know, LAPD three billion dollars, I'm sure all of you tweeted or posted something like, "Congrats, Lakers," whatever, but then LAPD was out in the streets shooting up the Lakers fans and citizens, and you, we are, those are our tax dollars at work. Um, and we're facing a four-hundred-million-dollar windfall in the budget, you know, things are gonna have to be adjusted. I know the LAPPL spends a lot on, uh, you know, Monica Rodriguez, uh, David Rue, you've taken a bunch of money from the LAPPL, um, but those contracts should be opened up. Um, as far, as far as item forty-four, uh, for Kevin DeLeone, uh, you know, replacing Huizar, uh, just a friendly reminder that John Lee, you are, uh, under investigation by the FBI. I'm sure, sure nothing will happen from that, John, no, nothing. Um, nobody that's been wrapped up in this scandal ha, has, uh, has been brought in. So, you're good, John Lee. You, you should, uh, you should, you should feel safe. Uh, for general public comment, um, David Rue, uh, you explicitly named Ground Game and DSA L.A. a, as hateful or divisive groups. Um, these are groups that are out, uh, you know, in the streets, um, trying to take care of Angelenos because of your incompetence, because of, um, you know, you, you've taken money from the LAPPL, um, you're, you're contributing to violence of Angelenos, um, you know, wi, with your sweeps in your, in your district, you're, you're contributing to violence in that way. The only one that, that is divisive and violent and is causing harm to our, uh, you know, to our city and our, and our community, David Rue, it's you. Ground Game and DSA do, do great work, and the fact that you call them out, uh, and are leading people to their websites so they can see what great work Ground Game and...
Thank you, Speaker.
Hold on for just a second, there's been a request. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, uh, take the privilege of responding to this caller. This caller just accused the Los Angeles Police Department of shooting up protests last night. Uh, there's no report of that that is completely uncooperated, and it's, it's infuriating, uh, to those of us who work on police accountability and are, have real cases that really matter and really impact people's lives, and so as far as, we heard that did not happen, and it's very irresponsible for someone to come on the airwaves and hold that accusation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take the next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in five-three-one-eight, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Gina Viola, and I'm gonna speak on general public, um, actually, eleven through fourteen in general public comment.
So, let me just, Speaker, eleven through fourteen have been voted on, um, they're not actually subject to public comment now. You can take general public comment, though, and talk about any of those items if you want to.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so you have a minute.
Now, I'm actually too mad to give my public comment, because Councilmember Harris-Dawson, you just interjected to correct a mistake that the last caller said, "He didn't mean last night, he meant the night before last." LAPD did, in fact, open fire on a group of people celebrating the Lakers' victory. They got hit with rubber bullets, they got hit with pepper spray, there's tons of video out there. So, why you would correct him because he got the date wrong is, just shows me how far this council will go to protect the LAPD, who is sucking up all of the resources that this city needs. L.A. is the epicenter of houselessness. There are sixty-six thousand people living on the streets, and you continue to use the LAPD to criminalize people. This issue is about to explode, because you have done nothing to cancel rent, cancel mortgages. You're gonna see tons and tons of Angelenos evicted because of you, all of you. You would rather stand up and, and make, your hill to die on is to correct someone who takes his time to call in on public comment by, and is off by a day.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in eight-one-nine-one, please press star six.
I already, I already spoke.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in four-zero-seven-seven, please press star Caller with the phone number ending in four-zero-seven-seven, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, this is Ryan Rezo Farsai. I'm a Los Angelino, born and birth, UCLA Hospital. I'm speaking on item number twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-nine, and my public comments.
Okay, you have three minutes for all your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Uh, on item number twenty-seven, it is good that we're removing these, uh, these, uh, these, uh, addresses from the Resco, uh, Rent Esco account. It's good that these people are paying their violations and being in compliance with the city. My question is for the city is, uh, when are they gonna actually pay their debts? And it's, it's compiling as we speak, even this morning. I'm gonna move on to number thirty-one. Thirty-one, we're gonna be drafting the, relative to draft the two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program Guidelines. So, in regards to drafting these guidelines, I'd like it if we, uh, take the time and the effort to make sure that we include the homeless population as part of the, as, as a group versus the people that are living in poverty. So, one is living on the streets, one is living at home, but it cannot afford a lot of things. Maybe they can't even afford to stay at their current home as we speak. So, those are the two items that I'd like you guys to address, to make sure that you, you split up the two options. Person that's living in poverty or under the poverty line in the United States of America versus a person that's homeless on the street. These, these things should be addressed in terms of where does this fund, the funding go, and what kind of a housing unit it is, so designated. I'm gonna move on to number thirty-three. It is good that the city is, uh, allocating a little bit over sixteen million dollars for our senior citizens, uh, to address this issue. I'm sure it's, uh, with the Corona movie that's going on as we speak, it's been very, very trying times for them. They can't have any visitors, or they have limited visiting hours, and, and so it's good that we're spending some time and some money for those senior citizens. I'm gonna move to number thirty-nine now. I'm gonna move to number 39 now. Number 39 is very important. This is a standard procedure for the City of Los Angeles. We're spending $35 million this morning for 63 units, as the other caller discussed. 63 units is $555,000, $555.55, as he said. What my question is, and what is the real, real question, why it's not really detailed, is what is the square footage of each unit? How much are we paying per square foot to build the unit? That's important for the people to understand how we're spending our money. That is not, that is not in this report, on this agenda that I'm looking at this morning. And that will give you a clear understanding of what's happening with our money. Because I don't really know what's happening with our money. It just keeps stacking on the debt, debt load for the public.
Caller, you can go ahead and move on to your general public comment.
My general public comments. I wanna congratulate the Los Angeles Lakers for their victory in the bubble in Orlando on Sunday evening, getting us our 17th banner. And I'd like to request Mayor Garcetti and the city council members to plan a parade for them. It's been long overdue and this is, this would be honoring Kobe and Gigi as well as Dr. Jerry Buss, who has a key to the city of Los Angeles. My children brother for life. And tonight I wanna cheer on the Dodgers as they take on the Braves for game number two. And they have Clayton Kershaw, the ace at the, at the helm. So I wanna wish them good luck and hopefully they can get eight more games. And if the Dodgers win, I would like you to consider putting a parade for them, too. This has been over 30 years. Thank you very much and have a great eve, great day. Bye-bye.
Thank you, caller. Our next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6443, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 6443, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 6443, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8400, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8400, please press star six.
Okay, that concludes public comment for today's meeting. Members, just prepare to vote on the following items. Just go ahead and vote on items 2 through 8, item 27, and items 29 through 46. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. And if I may, Madam Chair, the public hearing is now closed for items 2 through 8. The tabulation of these ballots shall take place in space 300 of 555 Ramirez Street tomorrow, Wednesday, October 14th, at 10:00 a.m. To access the live stream, join Zoom meeting ID 953-8628-4393. The passcode is prop218. That's lowercase p-r-o-p-two-one-eight. The ballot tabulation results will be announced on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. So now with that, Blo- Bloomingfield?
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Ofero?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
14 ayes. These items are adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item 18. There is a substitute motion introduced by Ms. Rodriguez. Let's go ahead and vote on whether to substitute. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you. On whether to substitute, Bloomingfield?
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Ofero?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
14 ayes. The substitute resolution is now before council.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that item.
Bloomingfield?
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Ofero?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes. The substitute resolution is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item 28. This was called special by Mr. Bonin. I thought I saw our CAO in the building. Oh, Mr. Rich Llewellyn is, is in council chambers. Mr. Bonin? Let me make sure he comes to the table. Hold on for just a second.
Thanks.
Good morning, Mr. Llewellyn. Okay, Mr. Bonin, go ahead. Mr. Llewellyn is, is in council chambers. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Rich, how you doing this morning? Could you just give sort of a, a brief summary of this and I got a couple of questions?
Sure. Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. We have been negotiating with our civilian labor partners, particularly the labor partners subject to furloughs, about whether there was a way to extend the furlough implementation date. We've also been talking to all our labor partners about the general financial position, which is ongoing. In the short term, our labor partners have come forward with some proposals to save the city money and extend the furlough date. They include two unpaid holidays and moving the January excess sick payout a year, all of which are real savings on our part. We are recommending as part of in return, a, one additional floating holiday. And we believe that this allows your body sort of financially to move furloughs to January, at which point, obviously, the picture in Washington will be fully or much more clear. As of today's paper, they are still talking about a stimulus now. Whether it happens or not before the election seems less likely, but it clearly isn't dead. All sides are still talking. And if that doesn't happen, obviously, the next thing is the election itself and whether or not there looks like Washington will be helpful in that way.
Well, I'm glad to see the sorry about that. Glad to see the furloughs held off, particularly given the service impacts that would have. This saves us more money than the, the furloughs would have, or, or less?
It basically covers the cost till January. So it's the same cost, so we're leaving, sort of the overall budget is left at the same place.
And it defers the, the excess sick leave payout until 2022.
Correct.
I know it's really hard to predict even this year's budget, but what sense do we have of, of what our, what our long-term fiscal outlook is gonna be for, for that fiscal year? Is that still gonna be a tough year?
Oh, yeah, sir, unless Washington comes through with help, it will be a very tough year. It is always easier, though, and I appreciate our labor partners putting that forward, to plan for tough years than to react to them. So even deferrals, no one likes them, but they give us a way to plan for it in the budget process.
Well, I appreciate that we've been able to work with these 10 bargaining units and they've come forward with, with things that work better for, for everybody. I'm curious, though, because they're all civilian bargaining units. Where are we with the, the, the non-civilian, including the, the police bargaining units?
Councilmember and members, we have talked to all of our units about we will need additional assistance. Given our fiscal situation, certainly if there's not assistance from Washington. I think honestly, everybody's a little bit waiting and seeing to see what happens in Washington. The Democratic package at least says there is going to be a line item for state and local government. If that doesn't happen this month, and we are still sort of talking to them, but I think sort of, to be honest, people are a little bit waiting and seeing if we have as difficult a situation as it looks like, or not.
We have a difficult situation either way, I imagine, though, right?
It's not a good situation. It's a terrible situation if we don't have additional help from Washington.
So I, I know you can't give me any details about the, the ongoing negotiations, but are the, the bargaining units we're talking to, even though they're looking at January, are all of them willing to engage and help out in the situation?
They're all willing to talk. And no one has made any sort of final answer. And again, part of that, I think, depends on whether or not, if we got a large check from Washington, I'm not sure as many of them would wanna be helpful. If we don't, we will need them to be helpful.
Okay, thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Harris Dawson? Uh, Mr. Richard Llewellyn, there's, Mr. Llewellyn, there's two more members on the queue. Mr. Harris Dawson?
I'm sorry, that's a mistake.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you. Rich, I appreciate this and, and obviously, we're all, we're looking for anything that we can to, to prevent the furloughs and ultimately prevent the layoffs. And, and my big concern as we, you know, as we kick the can down the road in some respects, rationally, but we, we may make it more likely that we're gonna have layoffs. And that's gonna hurt our most, our youngest employees and our most diverse employees, our targeted local hire folks, everything else. So I'm worried about that, but as I'm sure we all are. But if you could help me with the math a little bit, because I don't quite understand it. We're reducing the number of furlough days, which costs money. And we get the savings from deferring the sick leave. And there's, that's in addition to the SIP. So are there, could you associate numbers with each of these costs and savings? So I have a better sense of the scale?
Yes, sir. There are two unpaid holidays. They're worth about 7.6 million each. The deferral of sick leave is 6.2 million. We're currently projecting SIP savings at 13 million. We have not updated that. As you know, we have, we have had some additional takers, but the timeline has slowed a bit, getting them retired, so we don't have an updated number. In addition, Labor agreed to move 7.4 million from the Healthcare Benefits Trust Fund into the budget. Plus, we have the 40 million in the unallocated balance. We will be recommending moving that in the next FSR. Together, that packet of money takes us to January, covering, letting people go back to work on their furlough days.
And, and, and that's scored against, how much, how much is the furlough days costing us?
They're about 140 million for the whole year, or about 5.4 million per day.
So we have the 7.2 plus the 6.2 plus 13 plus the 7.4. That's about 33, plus the 40 that's in unallocated, 73.8.
You might have missed one additional holiday. Remember, there were two holidays, sir.
I did the 7.2, the 6.2.
Two sevens, right.
Was there another one?
7.6, 7.6, 7.4, 6.2, 13, and 14.
Okay, I did miss one. I missed the 7.4, I believe. So, so that would be 81 million scored against the 140. And so I'm, I'm, and, and part of that is just deferral money. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get my head around it and I, I guess, reading the report, I couldn't quite get my head around it. So we have 140 million, the furloughs are costing us, but that's over the course of a year. The 81 million dollars in alternative savings is from now through January. Is that right?
Correct, sir. So we, we are still, to keep the budget balance, we will have to start either have new information or start furloughing in January.
Because there's another 60 million. So come, come January, we're still 60 million in the hole, right?
Well, we count it as 57, but yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just doing it roughly in my head. So that's 60 million in the hole, but that's but how does the deferral play into that? Because we also have the money that we're deferring for sick leave. Doesn't that, that get scored starting June 30th, right?
Yes, sir. That will be due next year. And it will be a money we have to find next year. Again, deferrals aren't as good as givebacks, but deferrals do help us with this year's problem and also help us budget for them.
Okay, and, and all of this is, is of course based on it's based on the assumptions that we put in the budget, which were kind of rosy, right?
Well, the, the expenditure assumptions are not rosy, sir. These are the expenditure assumptions.
No, no, no. I'm saying the revenue, this is all based on revenue that we assumed in the budget?
Well, on the revenue side, as you know, sir, we are down. The revenue, but on the expenditure side, this is how much furloughs actually cost on the expenditure side. That side has not changed, so.
Right, so this, this covers us on the expenditure side, right?
Correct. We're neutral on the expenditure side through January, but on the revenue side, you are very correct. We are way down so far this year.
Right. So while our hole may be, come January to June 30, is 60 million on the expenditure side, that doesn't take into account that the assumptions we made in the budget are not coming true?
That is correct, that is correct, sir. Our revenue, as we reported, is down and unlikely to be recaptured.
Okay. So just to kind of have eyes wide open here, well, this, we're in a bad spot. I guess we all knew that, but, but just, I'm trying to get my head around what it is. Because, so the 60 million is, is probably double that come January, if the revenues are where we're at, or more than that, right?
You know, we have
Is there any sense, we don't, we don't, we have no, there's no new revenue predictions yet?
We, we, put in our first report, we feared we were 200 to 400 short on the revenue side, sir.
Okay. All right, all right. Well, this is not this, this is at, at best, this is, this is kind of allowing us to, a little, some Band-Aids to get through the next couple of months when we think the world may, may turn around. But it's, it's no substitute for the, the hard work that we're gonna have to do. And in some ways, it may make that hard work more difficult if things don't turn around. But I don't have a better alternative at the moment, so I'm just trying to understand it. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, seeing no other members on the queue. Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield?
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Ofero?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
14 ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item 10. This was held on the desk for Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. I have an amending motion for item number 10. It's just to change the recommended council action to authorize the Department of General Services to negotiate and execute a new lease agreement between the city and PEI Investments LLC for a CD8 field office located at 546 LLC for a CD8 field office located at 5462 Crenshaw Boulevard, Los Angeles, California, for a five-year term with two five-year options to extend. Excuse me, and under the terms and conditions substantially outlined in the subject Municipal Facilities Report dated September 3, 2020, attached to Council File Number 20-1122.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris-Dawson. So, without objection, we're going to go ahead and continue this item as amended for one week. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay, let's move on to special one, that was introduced by Council Members Wesson and Mr. Price and Harris-Dawson. Mr. Wesson, do you want to speak on item, um, special one? It's currently being circulated as well.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President and members. Do we have to vote on the urgency of this first, do the findings, because I think it would be more appropriate...
Yes, sir.
...for me to speak after we vote to open up the conversation?
One of you needs to make the findings in order for us to move forward with this item.
Can I ask the city attorney to do that?
Hold on for just a second, Mr. Wesson.
In fact, if not, I can just say this. It came to the attention of the City of Los Angeles on Saturday, that legal cannabis industry was willing to donate funds to the city, and only to the city, for reward in the case of the missing young man Juan Carlos Hernandez, as described in this motion. This information was provided after the agenda was posted. In any missing person case, statistics show that there's an immediate need to act as quickly as possible. And so, based on that, I would request that this body agree that the findings are accurate and afford us the opportunity to move forward on this issued today. Does that work, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. City Attorney is, yes, that's, he's indicated to me that that will work. So, let's go ahead and prepare to vote. Hold on for just a second, Mr. Sadio. Did you have a question before we vote on the findings on this item?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Wesson for his incredible leadership and attention to this matter. Since I brought this matter forward to him, he has done, gone beyond the call of duty. The family appreciates it and loves him very much for it. But we are, we are doing and continue to do all that we can. We're reaching out to the outdoor communications industry as well, to see if we can get support from them. This will be really, really helpful, and it is really important for us at this moment that we move with all the urgency that this matter requires. So, I want to, again, thank you, Mr. Wesson, for your leadership on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. City Attorney, we're going to go ahead and prepare to vote on the findings on special one. Is there anything you want to add?
No, it's just the findings per Government Code Section 54954.2. If it, the, if the matter passes on the findings, then we'll take public comments, and then we'll vote on the substance of the motion.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on the findings on this special one item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris-Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes, the findings are adopted.
Okay, let's go ahead and take public comment on this item.
And if I may...
Maybe I could speak now, with your permission, Mr., Miss, Madam President.
Okay, hold on for just a second, Mr. Wesson. Mr. City Attorney?
I was just going to read out the moving clauses for, for Mr. Wesson, but if he wants to speak to it, or read it, that's fine, whatever he wishes.
Mr. Wesson, you want to speak now or after public comment?
Yeah, yes, and I appreciate the opportunity. To the public, to my colleagues on the council, I don't have to tell you, this is probably one of the most painful things that we do in our jobs. I, if it's painful for us, imagine how painful it is for the family and loved ones. A fine young man, a wonderful son, goes to work just like so many other wonderful sons on September 22nd. A mama's boy, x's his mom on a regular basis, lets her know that he'll be coming home and wants to know if he needs him to bring home some food. Obviously tacos was one of his favorites. On September 22nd is, just like any other day. The difference is, he did not come home. Six foot one, good-looking, 215 pounds his whole life before him, and a dream and a desire to be successful, so that he could help his family. And he didn't come home that night, and on the 24th of September, I believe, his vehicle was found on 64th and Figueroa. His family, his mom, strong and organized, her friends, and they began putting out missing posters, and I mean, these posters are everywhere in the region. I was in the western portion of Mr. Corretz's district, off of Wilshire Boulevard, saw one of these. We wanted to offer some kind of a reward, and found out that based on state law, unless technically there is a crime, we're prohibited from doing that. So, we had to creatively try to come up with a way to let the public know that there are things in place, that in the event they have information, so that we can locate young Juan Carlos, that there would be some form of a reward for them. So, what we did, we put together a Council District 10 Community Benefits Trust Fund. And we're thankful to the legal, to the licensed cannabis industry, because now there is an actual fund where they will place donations into, that we would then take those donations and give to anyone that gives us substantive information. The goal is to raise $50,000. So, anyone interested in contributing to this reward can send checks to the L.A. City Clerk's Office at 200 North Spring Street, L.A. 90012, care of the Juan Carlos Hernandez With your permission, Madam President...
Go ahead.
Before we listen to public comment, before we vote, I, I would like to afford his mother an opportunity to say a few words and urge every member on this council. And I do want to say this, too. When it first came up and I announced it, just about every member of this council put it on its social media, and we blasted it. So, the mom is very appreciative. I am very, very appreciative as well. But I'd like to let the mom speak for a couple of minutes, and then we'll take a public comment. And know, Mr. Hernandez, that our heart, prayers are, are with you in anything that the City of L.A. can do to try to assist you. All you have to do is let us know. Jasmine Panic from my office has been a liaison to you. She's very committed to you, and whatever you need, we will try to provide for you. So, if I could turn it over to Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. We're going to go ahead and let her into our meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam President and members of the city council. My name's Yahira Hernandez, and I reside in Council District 10 with my three sons. I'm here today in hopes of receiving any assistance and enticing the public to come forward, to give us any information in regards to my son Juan Hernandez, who's been missing since September 22nd, 2020. The family, since day one, we have been, we've taken up work, we've been putting flyers all over L.A. County and its surrounding areas. We were working with robbery homicide detectives, with friends, family, just the community, and till this day, there's no news of Juan being anywhere after he left his job on September 22nd at 10:01 PM. You know, we believe that they might be foul play, because as I've learned, the dispensary he was working at wasn't a legal one, and I know it's not a criminal case yet, but I do urge you to help us before it becomes one. You know, we, our, his family, his birthday's on Thursday, and we want him back. You know, we want to be able to be with him as we've always been, and the community, we're all still searching, and, and at this point, I just urge you, you know, to put yourself in my shoes. I'm a single mother of three kids. I live paycheck by paycheck. We're, you know, the emotional toll, the distress, that Juan's a good kid, you know, he, he was trying his best to survive, especially in the pandemic that we've been in, and this is not normal character. This is, I know my son, and wherever he is, he's not there on his own, and unfortunately, a lot of people are motivated by money. And we don't have the funds. We've been trying our best to raise it, but we don't have it. And if this is gonna get someone to speak up and give us the clue of where to start looking for Juan, our family would be forever grateful. And I humbly and desperately ask everyone here to vote yes on this request, on behalf of the Hernandez family, friends, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hernandez, for being with us this morning. I know all, all of us collectively are trying to do our best to post information of where to call, to make sure that Juan comes home. So, know that we're all working together to ensure that we spread the word, and working with Mr. Wesson as well. So, thank you for being here this morning. I'm going to go ahead and take public comment now, members.
So, before you do that, Madam President, let me just read in the language of the motion, so it's before the public.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Then we're going to move on to public comment, and then we'll be able to vote on this item.
Correct. So, the relevant moving clauses are, that the city council accept donations for the sole purpose of providing a reward for information leading to the whereabouts of Juan Carlos Hernandez, and advertising such reward. If a crime is found to have been committed, this reward will then be made available to provider, offer of reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person responsible for such crime against Mr. Hernandez. The next moving clause authorizes the city clerk to set up the relevant accounts, and also provides that these funds may not be used for any purpose, or, excuse me, any other purpose. The funds will be returned to the donors within three years, if unspent, unless the reward is reauthorized by the city council, and that any donation which exceeds a sum of $5,000 in value shall be submitted to the city council for acceptance. And with that, I think we can take 10 minutes of public comment on this item only.
Correct. So, why don't we go ahead and open up the lines? Madam Clerk, go ahead and, and read the call-in information for anyone wishes to speak on this item.
Thank you. The call-in information is 669-254-5252, meeting ID number 1605358466. Then press pound, press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
And as a reminder, when you're identifying numbers called out, please then immediately press star six to unmute yourself. Again, there's a slight delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, so keep one ear on the phone, so that you hear us as soon as we identify you, so you can unmute yourself.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on the item.
All glory and honor to Juan Carlos, blessings to him and his family. Ms. Hernandez, I'd like to suggest that the city, when you were holding up the picture, it wasn't high enough, so maybe to get a little more publicity on this item, on, on this tragedy, that the city council use his picture, members, the city council member use his picture as a backdrop occasionally, possibly, to get his picture out. Hopefully, he is found and safe. Blessings to you and your family. Herb Wesson, there are lots of people, you were giving away dog homes at City Hall when people are dying on the streets. This is a campaign opportunity for you. But back to this tragedy, all glory and honor and blessings to this family, Juan Carlos and Ms. Hernandez. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and take the next caller.
And Madam President, before we take the next call, there was an additional part of the motion that I failed to read. It also provides that the clerk be directed to publish a reward notice if the account receives more than $50,000 in the R Weekly and La Opinión and Los Angeles Sentinels and the L.A. Watts Times, in addition to the regular publications used by the city clerk for reward notices, to ensure adequate community notice. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4808, please press star six. Caller with the phone number, please state your name and speak on the item.
Hi, this is Rob, Rob Quan. Good to see council stepping up, I hope on a sound. But, you know, I think it's also worth noting that the reality is, the only reason we're hearing from you all is because we've gotten a lot of social media attention, and we have some people looking for our media. Would we be getting all of these extended dramatic remarks from the council member if we weren't literally on the ballot at this exact moment? Where would the adjournment or simple mention of Daniel Hernandez or Kenneth French's name? Remember with Kenneth French, you know, his family experienced a far more agonizing, they, they woke up in the hospital with multiple gunshot wounds and found out that their trip to Costco ended up with an off-duty LAPD officer killing their son. We never heard a word from you. The next month, Herb... The next month, her co-authored motion allowing off-duty LAPD officers to either bring in guns to entertainment venues or require the venue to provide a lockbox. Convenient timing regardless. Happy to see you stepping up, having your friends chip in some money and hope you found. Thank you.
Next caller. Okay, that concludes public comment. Mr. City Attorney, there appears to be no additional callers on the line.
Very good. So we can vote now.
So we can go ahead and vote on the substance of this motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
And if I may, Madam Chair, we would like to confirm the second by Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Confirmed.
Thank you.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Deion.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Ofero.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Weston.
Members, thank you, and Weston, aye.
Fourteen ayes, this motion is adopted.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hernandez, this motion has passed. Thank you for being with us. And we hope and pray that Juan is returned safely. Thank you very much for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Weston. Madam Clerk, do we have any verbal motions that have been introduced?
Yes, if I just may clarify for item number 10, it will be continued one week to Tuesday, October 20th. And there have been three verbals introduced.
Do we have any verbal motions? How many do we have?
Yes, Madam President, there are three that the clerk has to read into the record.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with the first one.
The first one has been presented by Councilmember Rodriguez. This is a commendatory resolution. This honors the Indigenous Circle of Wellness for their support of Pukuny Cultural Community Services and the Fernandino Tataviam Band of Mission Indians in their efforts to serve the needs of their community. And a seconder?
I can second that. Okay, next motion.
The second commendatory resolution, also introduced by Councilmember Rodriguez, honors Andrew Masial Senior for his support of the Pukuny Cultural Community Services and the Fernandino Tataviam Band of Mission Indians in their efforts to serve the needs of the community.
Yeah, I'll second that as well. What's your third one?
And the third one is also presented by Councilmember Rodriguez. This commands Lieutenant Second Chris Ramirez for his 33 years of loyal, dedicated, and parallelled service to the public and the LAPD and congratulates him on his extensive professional accomplishments and extends best whispers for his retirement. And a seconder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you.
Okay, members, are there any verbal motions? Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. In the moving clauses, I therefore move that the fire department be directed to report with detail regarding Caltrans parcels located within the city's high fire severity, I'm sorry, high fire hazard severity zones, the number of brush clearance violations and delinquent cases associated with Caltrans in the last three years, and any outstanding costs owed to the city. I further move that the fire department be directed to report on the number of fires the department has had to respond to on Caltrans properties in the last three years.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfeld. Any others, Ms. Rodriguez?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Madam President, thank you. I, here's the moving clause. I therefore move that the council instruct the planning department in consultation with the housing department to prepare a report with recommendations on the feasibility of revising the transit-oriented community's affordable housing incentive program and its TLC program guidelines and include the recommendations feasible revisions to land use regulatory controls that impact but are not limited to public infrastructure, local housing market needs, scale, density, and that account for the unique and varying characteristics of neighborhood conditions citywide.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any others, Mr. Sadio?
I do. This one is moving clause. I therefore move that the council instruct the housing and community investment department to report back to the housing committee with a list of the landlords that refused to participate alongside recommendations on how the city could require landlords to participate in the citywide emergency rental assistance subsidy program in order to address these unintended consequences of depriving tenants throughout the city from their right to receive it. Second. I further move that the council instruct the housing and community investment department to report back to the housing committee with recommendations on the feasibility of subsidizing the renters that applied for and rightfully won the lottery through the rental subsidy program but were denied their access to participation in the program and their rightfully granted rental subsidy due to the denial of participation of a landlord.
Second.
Let me, let me just make a change here, rather than due to the denial, due to the refusal of participation of a landlord.
I still second.
Any others, Mr. Sadio?
That's it, Madam President, thank you so much.
Any other verbal motions, members? You see none, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting and referring. The motions will be posted on the clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing.
Posted and referred, members, are there any announcements? Mr. Buscaino?
Sorry, adjourning motion, just one.
Any, any announcements, members? Mr. Price, do you have an announcement?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to invite neighbors and friends to come out to our free, no-cost COVID-19 antibody testing. It's going to be taking place today, tomorrow, and Thursday at our district office on 33rd and Central between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. No charge. And everyone is invited to come, welcome, are welcome. But we invite, encourage you to sign up in advance. You can do so by contacting the office at 323-846-2651. That's free COVID-19 antibody testing in CD9. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, Mr. Sadio?
Closing memory of Madam President when appropriate.
Okay, we want to adjourning motions at this time. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President. It's with a heavy heart that I ask that we adjourn today's council meeting in memory of Lane Sherman, Congressman Brad Sherman's mother, who died Sunday at the age of 91. Lane was a well-known volunteer for Democratic Party causes in California since the 1960s. And in particular, she was a longtime member of the Action Democrats and the L.A. County Democratic Party. And I knew her for 47 years from the time I first met Brad at UCLA, when we helped to found the Bruin Democratic Club together. We would always see her at, I would always see her at Democratic Party events and family sators and always appreciated her very happy outlook. And I will personally miss her. For 30 years, Lane was a very active and amazing supporter of campaigns for her son Brad, happily greeting strangers and acquaintances alike and often handing out Brad's trademark combs with his name on it. She was sort of Brad's secret weapon in campaigns. During his election, she would be at parks and picnics and restaurants and anywhere where you could see more than three people at one time. And she would be telling them that she was Brad's mother and handing out a flyer and a comb. And there are many people that think she was the difference in some of his elections. She and her deceased husband Maurice were mainstays of the Jewish community in Orange County. And later, Lane was active in the Jewish community in the San Fernando Valley. She was a noted donor to Jewish and liberal and Democratic causes and a very avid baseball fan, especially fond of the Los Angeles Angels. She's remembered fondly by several members of the Action Democrats who noted that after their meetings, they always ended up at Sally's Deli in Sherman Oaks at the end of the night for a little Democratic gossip, but that Lane could never leave that restaurant without walking around to all the booths and introducing herself as Brad Sherman's mother and usually offering a comb to somewhat, sometimes somewhat bewildered people at the booths. Lane was born and raised in the Winfield section of the city of Philadelphia. And she then joined her father, working with the U.S. forces to rebuild Japan in the aftermath of World War II. She graduated from UCLA, met Maurice Sherman at a UCLA Hill Hall event, and they built a life together in Monterey Park and later in Newport Beach, where Maurice was a senior vice president of the National Education Corporation. Maurice died in the 1980s. And a decade later, Lane moved to Porter Ranch in the San Fernando Valley. She survived by her husband, excuse me, she was predeceased by her husband Maurice. She is survived by her son, Brad Sherman, her daughter Audrey, six grandchildren, Shana Ishad, Molly, Naomi, and Lucy, three great-grandchildren, Chandra, Alexis, and Oliver, and one great-grand, great-great-granddaughter, Olivia. Lane will be buried next to her husband Maurice in Pacific View Memorial Park in Newport Beach, where a small, family-only funeral will be held. A celebration of Lane's life will be held at Valley Beth Shalom Synagogue sometime next year. Funeral services will be private and condolences may be sent to the family at Congressmember Sherman's district office. We send deepest condolences to Brad Sherman and his family. And we are forever grateful to Lane for her selfless volunteerism and public service. And may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. And if I might just add, would you include all council on this adjourning motion?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. up, Mr. Bonin.
Could I just add to this adjournment a little bit, Madam President?
Sure, Mr. Bonin was before you, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
Thank you. I've got to take it on based on who pressed their virtual hand first. But we'll come back to you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask that we adjourn today in memory of Kevin Blake Graham Casso, the identical twin brother of my deputy chief of staff and communications director, David Graham Casso. Kevin passed away at the beginning of this month at the age of 36. A former resident of Mar Vista and of Hollywood, Kevin was born in San Diego and came to L.A. to attend UCLA, which was his dream college since childhood. He graduated from there with a degree in history. Kevin loved storytelling and he aspired to become a film producer and a screenwriter. So like many people looking to get into the business, he began working in assistant roles at production companies. He would go on to work with prominent and successful producers like Oscar winners Brian Grazer and Scott Rudin, directors like Robert Rodriguez and Jody Hill, musicians like Devo's Mark Mothersbaugh, and actors like Josh Brolin. A few years ago, while in between jobs and traveling through Europe, Kevin met Asma Deirja. The two of them fell in love and they were married, moving Kevin first to Munich and then to Berlin, Germany. Though he lived on the other side of the world, Kevin kept involved in politics here in his home country. And the amateur stand-up comedy independent radio show he produced and hosted in Berlin would often feature his own political commentary. Though he hid it from most of his family and his friends, Kevin struggled with depression. And earlier this month, he left this world suddenly and voluntarily. He is preceded in death by his mother Tina and survived by his wife Asma, his father Frank, stepmother Patty, sister Megan, brother-in-law Obie, sister-in-law Lindsay Horvath, I'm sorry, Lindsay Boobar, three nephews and a niece, and his identical twin brother, David Graham Casso, who I said is a member of my staff. My heart goes out to David and Lindsay and to the entire family. And I ask that we adjourn in memory of Kevin today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Mike, send David our love, please. Such a tragedy. Send him our best. Madam President, members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Maxima Perez, who left us too soon at the early age of 34. She was dear friends with my planning director, Axel Palacios, and his wife, Kim. Passed away on September 27th. Maxima was a lifetime resident in Harbor Gateway. She was an amazing daughter and friend to all those who knew her. And in her short time, she was supportive of friends, family, and all those who came into contact with her. Her warm, radiant smile lit up any room she entered and no one could come away from a conversation with her without smiling too. She dedicated herself to her community, very active volunteer, always said yes to an invitation to clean up the community, support community events, and beyond. She will terribly be missed. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add earlier on to Lane Ma Sherman's adjournment that Councilmember Corretz so eloquently spoke, the mother of our Congressmember Brad Sherman. And he gave a very great history of Lane. And I just wanted to also just quickly add that she was a stalwart. I mean, she was one of the icons in the valley, not just for her son, but for all the, anything politics in the valley. And actually, I spoke with Congressman Brad Sherman earlier and we both joked, he said, "How many combs do you have?" And actually, I started laughing because I have a comb in my car, I have a comb in my, at my office, I have a comb in my house. I, comb is not a problem for me because of Lane Sherman. And, you know, she joins her beloved husband Maurice now. And may she rest in peace. And I believe the private funeral is going on today. And our condolences, and I know the entire city council joined the adjournment. Our condolences goes to Congressman Brad Sherman and his entire family. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very well said, Mr. Rue, thank you. Any other adjourning motions, members? Mr. Sadio, did you have an adjourning motion?
Madam Chair, I did. This is sad, but it's also a really great memory. And so it's with sadness, but it's also with, with great memories for all of us Angelinos and Dodger fans that we adjourned today in the memory of Sweet Lou Johnson. He was 86. He died at his home here in Los Angeles on Thursday, October 1st. He was born Louis Brown Johnson in Lexington, Kentucky, September 22nd, 1934. He was nicknamed Sweet Lou when he joined the Dodgers because of his enthusiasm, his hand clapping, his energy when he was on the team. He had a very good career. But the thing about him was that he was just enthusiastic. Fans would call him out from the stands and he would acknowledge them. I got to meet him later in life at the stadium. And he's just one of the most encouraging, positive, enthusiastic persons you could meet. He made, every time you said hello to him and he said hello to you, he made you feel like you were the only person in the stadium of 50,000-plus people. There were a couple of noteworthy things. He had the only hit when Sandy Koufax pitched a perfect game on September 9th, 1965. He got on base, he stole a base, and he was able to come in on a sacrifice fly on the only perfect game. And the Dodgers won that game with one hit. The losing pitcher pitched the one hitter. And then he also hit a homerun off of Jim Cat from Minnesota Twins in the seventh game, where Koufax also was the winner and threw a three-hit. where Koufax also was the winner, and threw a three-hit shutout with 10 strikeouts. He's really just a revered human being. Later in life, he had problems with substance abuse, and he hit rock bottom. And it was really sad, at some point, the story is that he had to give up his World Series ring while he was trying to purchase some drugs, and he went and got money, went back to buy his ring, and both the drugs and the dealer were gone. It was really a tragedy, but then later, he was found at rock bottom by the Dodgers, by their leadership, and put into rehab. Don Newcombe, another great Dodger, helped him get into rehab, and well, Peter O'Malley helped him pay for his treatment. So he was in the recovery community, as well known, a great speaker. Everybody wanted to hear from Sweet Lou Johnson, who'd go out in the community, and was constantly out there encouraging people with their battles and their struggles in the recovery community. Later, one of the Dodger staff members heard about an auction of a World Series ring that was on the internet, and it turned out that it was his ring. And so Dodger President Bob Graziano paid the money for the ring, and they gave it back to Lou. Obviously, he was moved to tears by that act of kindness and generosity. It's a big loss for the baseball community, and it's also a very big loss for the recovery community everywhere. He's survived by his wife Sarah, his children Lauren, Carlton, and Quentin, and the entire Dodger Nation. It's with heartfelt condolences that we adjourn in memory of Sweet Lou Johnson. Services are pending, and he survived, as I said, by wife Sarah, children Lauren, Carlton, and Quentin, and I ask that we adjourn in the sweet memories of Lou Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Any other adjourning motions, members? You see none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
and how things got skewed over the years and became a situation in which Christopher Columbus as an individual was being honored, and if you look into his history, there are so many atrocities, especially in regards to the indigenous people that you are referencing.
Right, so Christopher Columbus, like or not, became the symbol.
Statues, monuments, major cities have been named in his honor, and he himself, the historical
record is a fact, it reflects the acts of violence and really murder that he was responsible for personally, and then his two subsequent trips, subjugating an entire Native population across the Americas, Central and South America. And this is a man that never stepped foot in the continental United States and never discovered really anything. So this isn't about the Italian culture or the Italian immigrant community or any particular heritage at all, it's about honoring the folks who are here before any of us to make it possible for us to live the life that we do in a way to honor first peoples.
And acknowledging and realizing their contributions, because you just mentioned the fact that, you know, you have the prestige of being the first Native American to serve on the council here in Los Angeles. But as a young man growing up, was that heritage part of your vernacular, was that heritage part of what made you become you?
Undoubtedly. So when I was very young, I learned that my grandfather had been chief of the tribe previously. By the time I was a teenager, my grandfather was chief of the Wyandots again. My mother was the Indian princess when she was 15, which is a great honor for one particular tribal teenage female a year, and so my mother was the designation in the year she was 15 years old. My grandfather's brother was chief of the tribe, and then when Chief Billy Friend came out on two occasions to swear me into office and participate in some of the Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrations here, he's taught me that Wyandot chiefs run in my lineage, and I never knew beyond my grandfather and his brother. So I have to believe that somehow, the journey, the destiny, whatever we want to call it, was laid out for me in advance in this very, very circuitous route of me moving to Los Angeles at 21, not intending at all to go into public life, and then becoming the council member who would then help lead the way to create Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Right.
So everything happens for a reason.
I think the Wyandot tribe in and of itself is fascinating, because just, you know, kind of moving backwards and seeing how the adaptations and the complications and also the, you know, the gathering of different tribes to become the Wyandot tribe, I thought was, is really, really rich and filled with so much texture.
Yes. The Wyandots originated from the Huron area, actually on the Canadian side of what is now the U.S.-Canada border, and dwelled in the Sandusky, Ohio area. We were nomadic at a certain point, ended up with, along with the Mohawks in New York. The Wyandots were the last tribe removed from...